Two people I've helped that are homeless in Kattati, what we did is we took the, we've given up on you. Um, we, what we did is we rented the motels in Runet Park so they could get services because City of Kattati did nothing. So you guys need to stop thinking county and start thinking how as a city you can um address the homeless needs of just not um, of Kattati citizens and how it's impacted in the local area. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Uh, that's the last hand, so that will end public comment.
All right. Thank you. Um, I will ask the council then if they have any further. Well, thank you so much for the presentation and appreciate your time and look forward to hearing more. Sure.
Um, I, I just wanted to say regarding that uh comment that I would love to see Kattati do more as well and would be really open to hearing what suggestions people have on how we could better address the homeless in our city.
Thank you for that. Uh, then we will move on to the next item, which is approval of the final agenda. Are there any changes?
No proposed changes, Mayor.
Yeah, okay. Um, since this is an action item, I will open this up for public comment. Any um action on the final agenda, approval of the final agenda? Not seeing anyone jump up. Uh, can you ask our Zoom attendees, please?
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. If you would like to make a public comment on approval of the final agenda, please use the raise hand icon at this time. Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
Okay, thank you for that. Then we will move on to citizens' business and public comment for the consent calendar items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2021-01, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where disability accommodation has been requested. So I will start here. Citizens' business or consent? Yes, please. Mayor Harvey, council members, how are you all doing today?
Great.
Awesome. Um, so I wanted to talk about item B, 9B, the design agreement for Putnam and Canterfield updates, particularly for Helen Putnam. So I'm, I'm just concerned that the conceptual designs are coming before any of the public workshops. Um, specifically because I know that there were public workshops many years ago um, and there was a design that was created in 2019, I believe. I couldn't find the design again online when I went to look. Um, but it does not seem to align with how the park is currently being used. Uh, my family and I are at the park almost every night. Um, there are and, and so I, I just am worried that we're going to spend money on conceptual designs and your public workshops are going to straight disagree with the basic three designs that have come forward. Um, in particular, the dog parks seem too small. There doesn't seem to be a need for a large dog park and a small dog park. Um, I'm concerned about where the live-action role-playing kids that are there a couple times a week with their trailer and all their stuff would be able to set up and go. Um, and so there's just a lot of concerns. There's a lot of dog activity that has a lot of frisbees and it's just like a place that right now is a beautiful community meeting place and people already are feeling like they're being pushed out because there's a lot of curiosity of what is going on with the field. It seems that Calooc's has expanded the footprint of the field significantly based at least on where the spikes are going that say where different posts are going to be. Um, which hasn't been really described to the community at all as far as that being expanded. And so just, I'm, would like to see a public workshop before the conceptual design phase of this project. Um, that being said, I'm really excited about the project itself. Um, I'm really excited about the park improvement that could happen. Again, we're there just constant several days a week and so very excited, but just the community is in a hole would like some input before the conceptual design phase. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Um, can we check with our Zoom attendees?
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon at this time. Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, Damian, would you like to uh, address the um, Putnam Park issue?
Um, sure. So uh, the, in 2019, the um, the city adopted the Parks Capital Plan, which includes um, conceptual plans of all the parks and it's not, um, you know, I wouldn't look at them as designs. I mean, you can take Kattati Park as an example. I mean, some things moved around significantly. Um, some of the concepts, a lot of the concepts, the general concepts were there, but they moved and the sizes changed. It was, it's, um, it was intended to be a concept plan and that was through the, um, that was the product of uh, hey, each area had several community workshops to talk about what people wanted and so that was just to try to incorporate people's input at that, at that stage. So the design process, the way that's going to work is um, uh, we do have a conceptual plan from the 2019 workshops. So we would just start with, um, start with that and say, this is in 2019 what people said they wanted. What do you all think? And get additional input. Um, so it's at least one workshop, I think there potentially two, you know, potentially two workshops for the, for the parks. So um, those, those concept plans would be refined, the original concept plans from 2019 would be refined um, through that process. So um, you know, concerns about the dog park size and small versus large, all that stuff would be vetted in that process. The concept would be refined before any design work is done.
And do we have a timeframe for that?
Um, so if the council approves it tonight, um, we need to schedule those workshops with the consultant, but I'm imagining July, August timeframe. It shouldn't be any later than August. At least have the first workshop. I'm hearing August.
Somebody's whispering over there.
A lot of big similar events, so August, but, but I mean, it should be in the next couple of months.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. Then um, I will um, bring this back to the council and I understand that um you need to recuse from one item.
Do you need to ask if anybody wants to pull something first?
Oh, I do. Sure.
I'd like to pull item 9B, the parks.
Oh, okay. All right.
Can I pull uh, 9E?
All right.
Yeah, I just want to understand it more because it's in near Alder Lane and the cottages.
Okay, B and?
E.
Is it a simple question or do you want to?
Well, I don't know. I just, the plans were so tiny and I couldn't really see what, what was being changed there. And then also in the, in the street improvement plan, it talks about installing a new streetlight. So I don't know if that's at that intersection or where that would be at. And like I said, the plans were so small, I couldn't really tell. So uh, since we had other reconfiguring discussion last week, this one kind of confused me a little, so I wanted to just get some clarification.
All right. So we have left, do you, do you want to just address that or do we need to pull it?
Well, if it's a streetlight, that's it. I mean, that's pretty simple. It's just the improvements on Alder front. It's the Jane dispensary, that new little development there.
So streetlight, they're not like in the street?
Not on 116. It's just really on Alder. Um, there's a streetlight there and some curb gutter sidewalk that was installed with the project. Yeah, so it's accepting those improvements officially and releasing the bond. That's what the item is.
So is that?
It looks like just improvements to like the curb and the street there in that area?
Uh, yeah, curb gutter sidewalk, streetlights, trees. Um, I think they expanded the, they dedicated some right-of-way to add bike lanes there on that one side, on the project side.
Okay, great. That's fine.
Are we okay? All right. So E is okay. All right. So, and you want to be, and you're, you're good. Okay. So now.
So, uh, yes, Mayor, thank you. I need to recuse from item C, so I move that we adopt consent calendar items A, D, E, and F.
I'll second.
Okay. So items A, D, E, and F, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so those pass and then we will move to item B?
I'm sorry, Mayor. I think I'm supposed to say why I'm refusing. I live within the borders of the downtown specific plan. That's why I have to recuse.
Okay. Now we'll do B.
Did you, are you voting on C now?
Can we vote on C now? Okay. I need a motion to vote on C.
I move that we approve consent calendar item C.
Um, not for consent calendar item. For, yeah, we're not going to just.
So just refusing means just not voting, not leaving?
Well, if we were going to have a discussion on the item, but because it's on the consent calendar, we're not discussing it. It's a subtlety, subtle, yes.
And I'll second. Yeah, I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second. Um, we have, all in favor?
Aye.
And we have one recusal, so that's a four, one. All right, now B. So Damian, would you like to take this?
Sure, yes. So 9B, um, uh, would the council like a staff report or just, is there certain questions?
Um, I just have a few comments and just also maybe discuss and see if the council agrees or has any follow-up questions. Um, one was, uh, I did see in the staff report that the construction of the dog park was being bumped up in priority to possibly have construction begin in 2023, 2024 fiscal year. Um, and I think that's because the baseball people are willing to help with it, possibly. So I, that just brought up concerns and I'm happy that we had some public comment because it sort of mirrored some of the things I was thinking, that this is a park that's sort of the center of the dog universe in Kattati. And I just think it's extremely important that we get the full public comment and full public engagement and not feel like we need to rush to get the dog park built on some, dog park built on a, on a um, condensed timeline because it's just so important to get it right. Um, I share the concern that was brought up about the old plans not really reflecting how the, how the park is used today, that the dog park on those conceptual plans is much smaller than the footprint that people actually use it for. Um, so I, I think that was a great suggestion to try to get the, the um, public workshops, maybe at least one of the workshops to happen before they spend time developing, because it says in the contract, they're going to develop three different options and then bring those for comparison. And if all three of them have a tiny little dog park on it, then it's, it's been a waste of time if folks are looking to see a larger park or, or other changes like that. So um, so that was one thing I wanted to mention is just, I think it's really important that we don't rush this, um, because there are so many different uses of the park. Um, the second point I wanted to bring up was the, um, there was a line in the staff report about some private citizens having been in contact um, about wanting to see a certain buffer zone between the drainage ditch and the rest of the park. And um, I just, just for clarity, I wanted to share with everybody that, that um, some of those conversations happened with people from the Laguna Foundation and people from Sonoma State who are interested in the um, habitat there along, along that. Um, it's really a big, huge drainage ditch now, but it could be, it could be more, better habitat. Um, and so I was hoping to see that we could have a communication with the Laguna Foundation be included in the scope of work uh, for the designers, because I know there were folks at the foundation who were willing to help with landscape design and possibly even providing plants, um, that were native, native species that would be good habitat um, for that area. And then the last point I wanted to bring up was um, just to ask that we emphasize with the contractor um, to use dark sky friendly lighting in the landscape design, because if we are looking to improve the habitat in that area down the line, we want to make sure it's not too bright at night and blasting the little frogs' eyes. Thank you.
Yeah, I would support those changes. I'd like to see a, a, a meeting happen as it says in the staff report and not, it's, not as it says in the actual scope of work, which is kickoff with, with public engagement, not with the firm coming up with three designs. And that somewhere we do write in uh, coordination with the Laguna de Santa Rosa Foundation as part of the scope of work. I also had one question in task four. This must be a typo or, or it's a technical term I don't understand. Item three in task four in both parks says final preliminary state of probably construction cost. What does that mean? Should it be probable? Final?
Um, it'd be probable cost, yeah.
I mean, first of all, anything called final preliminary is probable. Is, is that really what it's called? The final preliminary something?
Under task four, it'd be the?
Yeah, number three in task four. In both parks, it says final preliminary state of probably construction cost. And I don't know what that means. That's it.
Yeah.
That's something I just suggest you work out with them before you sign it. Figure out what that means.
It would be, I mean, I think it's, I think what, I think what they meant to say is just final probable construction cost, like an engineer's estimate, basically.
Yeah. But I would suggest the substantive changes that Vice Mayor Sparks suggested.
Yeah, I guess I read this a little bit differently because when I looked at it, I saw in their task five before the designs are done that there were going to be up to two, two workshops on it. So I guess I leapt to the assumption that the workshops were going to finalize it and then we would get the designs, not that we would get designs and then the workshops, because I saw task five before task six. So I guess I just, you know.
Task three is the conceptual designs we're talking about.
But I think that those as, were, were the ones from 2019?
Yeah, how it, um, well, how it was, how it's supposed to go is they're going to have a workshop with no designs other than the 2019 design, just to get public input. And then based on that, they should come back with some conceptual designs for a second workshop and say, this is what we heard at the last workshop. What do you guys think? And then based on that second workshop, then they move into design from there. That's how, that's despite the confusing or maybe contradictory language in the scope, that's how it's supposed to work.
So maybe their tasks are a little, little confused.
So can we ask them to do it that way?
Uh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, all these suggestions were fine, I think. Yeah.
Did you have another question?
No.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's okay. It's okay. It's all right. Um, do I need to open this up again since we opened it once before, since we pulled it?
I would just get comment one more time, yeah.
Okay. All right. So um, any more comments? Then I'd be looking for a motion. Again?
Yeah, I would, yeah. I mean, the first time was just during general public comment. Now it's been pulled, so I would.
Certainly. And would you care to speak again on this item? Coming, what's going, twice? Well, it was pulled. So we pu, we pulled it. So it's not?
Yeah, I mean, I'm.
Please, yes. You must come up.
It's just so people in Zoom can hear you too.
Otherwise it doesn't get recorded.
That's fair. Um, I would just encourage you to specifically say in the motion that you will not be doing three alternative site plan concepts before an initial um, public meeting. Because that's what it says in this language, is that there will be three alternative site plan concepts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And to our Zoom attendees?
Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
All right. So, anyone like to make a motion?
I move to approve uh, this item.
B.
Item B.
I just want to clarify, that's with the changes we suggested, correct?
Yes, I, I, I think we got the okay from city manager that he's going to.
I see a thumbs up.
Yes, I, I understood the feedback, so we'll make sure we incorporate that.
But can I ask, there's actually a resolution in the packet. Do we need to like modify the resolution to reflect those changes? Because it says as, as outlined in the scope and service of, scope of service and budget attached to the staff report. Should we just add a phrase, something like modified to include a community meeting prior to design work and coordination with the Laguna de Santa Rosa Foundation? Is that? Are those the two things we?
Um, can I withdraw my motion and maybe Councilmember Ford can?
Councilmember Ford, would you like to make the motion?
I can if I'm, if I've got the right two things.
I think so.
Those are the right two things.
Also the dark sky friendly lights.
Ah, thank you. I move to approve the resolution in the packet with the addition to the first, therefore be it resolved, at the end of the paragraph, say um, scope of service and budget attached to the staff report, comma, modified to include a community meeting prior to any design work, uh, coordination with the Laguna de Santa Rosa Foundation and use it to dark, dark sky approved lighting. Is that right?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Right. Thank you for that. That's okay. We, you know, sometimes it takes us a couple tries to get there. It's all, all good. So uh, next is direction on future agenda items. Okay. Seeing no one jump up here, we will move on to uh, public hearings. The first one is establishing the outstanding backflow testing charges and levying of the assessments. Are you going to take this, Craig?
Yes, this will be an abbreviated presentation because this item did not receive adequate public noticing. So we're going to ask that the public hearing be continued to the next meeting. Um, this is an annual process. The city by the state is required to have annual testing of each of its backflow devices. And um, through our municipal code, we put that responsibility on the property owner. And in the case where property owners have received many letters and they still do not pay, uh, the city via that code has the ability, option to levy the assessment on their property taxes. So um, we will, because this, this requires um adequate noticing that was not provided, we're, we're going to go ahead and continue this through the next meeting. And there'll be a little more of a, a longer presentation for that and more comprehensive, but um, there's really not much more to it than this.
Okay. Any questions, Craig, about that? Okay. Then I will um, open the public hearing and we will um, look to any uh, public.
And Mayor, just a small correction. It wouldn't actually be opening the public hearing yet, just taking public comment.
Oh, taking, I'm sorry. We'll receive public comment. Um, we have lost our audience here, so would you check with the Zoom audience to see if they have any comments?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Harvey. If you would like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Harvey, that'll end a public comment.
Okay, so with that, we will continue this item till July 25th. And the next item is resolution to approve the engineer's report, confirm the assessment diagram and annual assessment amounts and levying and collection of the annual assessments for the Kattati landscaping and lighting assessment districts for fiscal year 2023, 24. Craig, is this also you?
That's correct. Mayor members of the council, Craig Scott, Public Works Director, City Engineer. This is another annual process. Um, and in fact, the third of three council meetings where this item is brought forward every year. The first is um, was back in May, uh, designating me as the engineer of record for this and um um, okaying the preparation of the annual engineer's report. The second was in May, where you received the draft report, set the public hearing date for today and um uh, and had the intention, uh, set the intention of making the assessments. Okay. So the 10 landscaping and lighting assessment districts that we have in this, the city was a financial mechanism to recoup costs of um, maintaining landscaping and lighting in these certain residential areas. And uh, the first one was established back in 1989 and the most recent was 2003. Now, it's a rather cumbersome way to collect fees because, or funding because it does require this pretty laborious annual process. Um, and then for the first six zones that we formed, the city And then for the first six zones that we formed, the city failed to include an escalation factor for inflation. And so those are stuck in time and some are only collecting $30 per household per year. And, and it's, it's, it's not allowed to increase. And then the last four do have an escalator to keep up with inflation. Okay. Next slide, please. So these are the 10 zones.
That's two.
We'll go ahead and go to the next slide, which shows where they are in the city, pretty much scattered around the city. And these zones, they'll have, all 10, all 10 of them have lights. And then nine of the 10 have landscape strips, mainly the streetscapes. Eight of those nine are maintained by our, a contract landscape company. And actually, all nine of them are, but eight are one company and one is another. And then the city, city crews will come in from time to time and do any finishing touches that might need to happen. Next slide, please. These zones also, the Landscape and Lighting Assessment Act contemplates having capital projects, so like if there's fences or benches that need to be repaired, like they're just completely need to be replaced, or pathways are, get, get old and unsafe. So we have a mechanism to also declare in this annual process that we're doing a capital project next year, get everybody's input on that, and then we would have the, the go ahead to do that. So we do annual maintenance and then I've just outlined the capital projects here in a couple of slides. Zone eight, Park Meadows. For this past year, we replaced the warped and worn asphalt pathway with the decomposed granite that goes out to Marsh Way and then the other across the bridge, Laguna Bridge. And then Altman Acres, which is the frontage there along Old Redwood Highway, that received or was remediated. We had sort of tattered weed fabric there. We, we ripped out all of that out and, and put in, amended the soil, new plants, put in weed fabric, the drip irrigation, and then the mulch over the top of that. And that pretty much took most of their reserves to do that. And now they have the next four, five, six years to build up those reserves again. That's in zone 10. Okay, then for Christiansen Court over here, which is Oak Knolls, zone six, we're looking to revamp and clean up the landscape. There's a strip along the left there as you go up Christiansen Court. And then there's an island there in the cul-de-sac and that requires some, some work, some touchup. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, so this basically is a summary slide showing the last year's assessment, 22, 23 assessment, the current maximum allowed, current maximum annual assessment, and then the proposed assessment. So for zones one through six, they're all the same number across the board. If you go right to left on each row, those numbers stay static. And then seven, eight, nine, and 10, you'll see the maximum. And what that is, is it's the construction cost index for the city of San Francisco from the inception, January 1st, or from the inception, rather, to January 1st, 2023. And the importance, the relevance of that is we, the city can increase the assessment any given year up to that maximum without getting a majority vote of the residents. What we have done, as you see in the final column, is we are still substantially below that maximum just because we haven't, we have the ability, but the city has not raised it every single year and has not raised it to the maximum, you know, amount every year. Next slide, please. This, this table shows the reserves and even, and then the final column, we try to characterize through the relevance of the reserves balance because some, some zones have a couple hundred or have up to 100 residences in there and then some are 14. And so relatively for the smaller zones, you would need to have a relatively larger reserve to the, to the number of people because, or households, because when landscape projects are expensive. And so $1,000 to Quail Hollow, for example, might be 100% of their annual assessment, but it's only a fraction of what's needed to update that landscaping in a given, you know, if, when it needs it. As can be expected, the first six zones are kind of limping along with their reserves. The best we can hope for is that they have a reserve and it's kind of staying stable. Most of them can be expected over time to start decreasing, as with Quail Hollow and Macklin, as the energy and water utility costs continue to escalate and they're staying Santero Way is one to, we're keeping an eye on because the city recently took over the landscaping from that, from the HOA. And when we did that, the, the assessment wasn't quite keeping up with the annual maintenance costs, so we've been adjusting gradually the assessment. And it's coming in for, it's bottoming out, it looks like, at about 9,000 for the reserves, maybe 8,000, and then it'll start climbing because there are capital requirements in that zone. There are trees and there's a park, a play structure, an exercise area that will need to be replaced at some point. So we're, we are keeping an eye out on that long-term balancing, leveling of the rates of the assessments. Next slide, please. Okay, this slide is hard to read, but it basically shows what I just talked about, what's happening generally to each of the reserves, if it's leveling out, if it's starting to climb again. Okay, next slide, please. This brings us to our recommendation, which is to approve the annual engineer's report confirming the assessment diagram and annual assessment amounts and levying and collection of annual assessments for the City of Katati Landscape and Lighting Assessment District for Zones 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10 pursuant to the Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972. And before I end the presentation, I wanted to call your attention to two requested corrections. One is on page 426, which is in the resolution. That third whereas above the resolves, it, for Zone 9, it incorrectly states 385. That is actually lower than what the current assessment is. It was just a mistake. It's $414.50, which would be our 5% adjustment, which we talk about consistently through these presentations. And then that correction, does everybody have that? You know where that is? It's, it's the resolution. Okay, and then the second correction is that same zone on page 454 of the engineer's report, where it lists the 385 again with each of the lot numbers. That should be $414.50. $414.50. Oh, 454, yes, sorry. So the first one's on page 426, then 454. And those are the only two corrections there. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Yep, okay. And then we will open this up for public comment. And there is no one in the audience here. Could you open it up to our Zoom attendees, please?
Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon at this time. Mayor Harvey, that'll end the public comment.
Thank you so much. Yes, thank you for zeroing out or getting a fresh start on that one that was always stuck out like a sore thumb. I know that that was painful for us, but I think it was the right thing to do. And I really appreciate that we have only one of these and not 10 of these. That was also extremely painful to go through. So with that, if there are any comments? If not, I'd be looking for a motion.
Yeah, I have a, a quick question. And I think I asked this before, but I'm not sure I understood the answer, so I'm just going to ask one more time, which is, I understand that there, there was an act in 1972 that set this up. Is that the reason why there are only these particular neighborhoods that are assessed fees for the landscaping? That I understand is, let me ask it a different way. Neighborhoods other than this, than these, do they get the same services without paying for it?
I was all ready to answer the other way. The cities, at some point in time, recognized that every house that went up lost the city money. We did not collect sufficient money through property taxes to pay for the maintenance that required in these subdivisions. So that's, that's when the city started doing, using the landscape and lighting assessment, started forming these assessments. So the early on developments, when this was the county, the county did not take advantage of the, well, maybe it was before 1972 also. So you'll see much of the city, it reflects when the city developed. So by default, all of the, the development that happened before 1972, this, this form, this mechanism was not available. And so then you'd see some other developments come in after this act and you'd see this assessment starting to develop. Now we have the community finance, facilities district that we have. And so we're, you're starting to see that be imposed on certain developments for the city to recover the, the cost of that development on streets, stormwater, police services, parks.
Okay, so...
So, so yes, there is a, there is a mix of some developments that, that do not, that are, don't have this responsibility. However, you'll see in these assessments that they have decorative streetlights, they have more ornate landscaping than what's, what was routine. Like some areas of town, they just have a ditch and a sidewalk, you know, so there's nothing to maintain. So there's, there's that. But are there some developments that have streetscape with, with trees? And I think there are and they, and they, they're not on the hook to pay the assessment.
So this is more like within the development, not like the street on the edge of a house kind of thing?
It's, it's along Myrtle Avenue. It's along Katati Avenue in some spots, Old Redwood Highway.
It tends to be public, like public street landscaping. Yeah, and so they started, as Craig was saying, they started in the 80s. They started doing these in the 80s. And I think it was just a, it was just a follow-on from Prop 13 and all the stuff that happened after that in the early 80s. And they decided in the late 80s to start doing these, take advantage of that law from 72 to start assessing for lighting and landscaping. And some, as Craig said, so some subdivisions don't have really any public area landscaping, they just have their own landscaping for their own property. So in those cases, there would be nothing. Others, like the Myrtle example, there's some landscaping on the street that doesn't really belong to any individual homeowner. And so that would be a candidate for this kind of cost recovery mechanism. And there's other, other, like other examples that are a little different, where you might have a subdivision and you have like a park. So an example of that would be like...
Santero Way? Santero?
Yeah. Well, Santero became, that one became a public park, but then there's Lipton, you know, their Village Walk. So that's by the 21st century, or Energy Fitness out there. There's a park back in there. And that's, for example, that is owned by the HOA and the HOA maintains it even though there's public access. So there's a variety of different ways that these things can be set up depending on the context of the subdivision.
Okay. If, if the residents of a zone decided that they wanted to do it themselves, could they opt out?
No, I mean, not, not directly. They would, I mean, they could have, they'd have to come to us and say, look, we have a plan and we want to do it better. And then I guess in theory, if we were okay with that plan, then we could, we could drop the assessment.
The HOA, I mean.
There's no, these ones don't have HOAs, so that's why.
Oh, okay.
You know, there's this kind of mechanism because the city is sort of acting as sort of an HOA in this case.
Right. Well, that, that's what's odd to me. Like it feels like, you know, doing maintenance for private residences is just a little odd for me for a city. But, you know, I understand what you're saying.
It's, it's just basically, I mean, typically it's lighting and landscaping that doesn't belong to any specific property, but it's there, it needs to be maintained.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Other questions? Okay. Then I would be looking for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the item. Trying to read it, right? Make a motion to approve the resolution of the city council, of the City of Katati approving the one-year license. No, I'm on the wrong one. Thank you. Resolution of the city council, City of Katati approving the annual engineer's report, confirming the assessment diagram and annual assessment amounts and levying and collection of annual assessments for fiscal year 23, 24 for the City of Katati Landscape and Lighting Assessment District for Zones 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10. Good job. Should we have second?
Second.
All right. Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me, mayor, I just wanted to clarify that Craig had asked for some amendments as well in the resolution. So were those a part of the motion?
May I ask the maker of the motion?
I approve the motion with a correction to that page 426. The third whereas from the bottom for Zone 9 should list $414.50.
Zone 10.
Zone 9. And the engineer's report on 454?
Okay, it is Zone 10.
It is Zone 10. That's, 454 isn't part of what, oh, it is.
Yeah, yes. And the engineer's report.
And the engineer's report, okay.
Second with those changes.
Okay. So we have a motion is second with all the changes. Now, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any noes?
I'm going to abstain because I feel like I need to look into this more. Thanks.
Okay. So we have one abstention, no noes, and four yeses. So now we will move on to the regular agenda and the first item is A. And I believe Mr. Ford...
Oh, yes, this is the one. I, I live within 500 feet of the Vets Hall parcel, so I need to recuse myself. I'll be in the conference room.
We'll come and get you when we're done. How's that? So are you going to start, Damian, or is Ashley going to start? You guys are like, both standing there next to your microphones.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and members of the council. I would like to recommend that the city approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a license agreement between the City of Katati and County of Sonoma for use of that... for use of Cotati Vets Building. The County of Sonoma owns, operates, and maintains the Cotati Veterans Building, which includes the building and connecting parking lots, which happen to be inside of Veterans Park, which the city currently owns. The city has a desire to bring more recreation programs, events, and private rental spaces to the community, and believes that the Cotati Veterans Building is an ideal location to do so. Currently, the city owns the Cotati Room here behind City Hall, which is often booked out months in advance, not being able to meet the needs of the community for rental spaces. The Cotati Vets Building is larger than the Cotati Room and is currently underutilized and undermarketed by the County of Sonoma. City staff believe that with the city taking over operations of the facility, life can be brought back to the, or brought to the Cotati Veterans Building, offering easier access and of use to the community. Under their proposed license agreement, the building and parking lots would be managed by the City of Cotati staff and its contractors. The proposed agreement, license agreement, which is attached with the city, is a one-year license agreement pilot with the option for extensions. The agreement would be beneficial to the city, because it would offer more space to run city-sponsored events and classes and programs, as well as a large event space to the public for private rentals, and also available to businesses for public events through the rental process. City staff, in conjunction with the county, has developed a draft license agreement with terms that include the city paying for utilities associated with the Vets Building and routine maintenance of the building and the landscaping. The county would remain responsible for larger repairs and infrastructure updates, generally anything over five thousand dollars, which is our current threshold for maintenance becoming a capital project. We are proposing that this one-year trial period, with the goals of developing higher utilization by the community, would understand that the staff time commitment to manage a facility would at least break even on costs. Our goal is to be net zero losses. In the general financial terms, which are, I'll go over, are that we would use this city staff time to manage the facility, which are not reimbursable, but all other utility costs and maintenance expenses that are, we get an invoice from a third party, so anybody we contract with would be offset the rental revenue. Anything that exceeds the contractor expenses would be split. So any revenue brought in that would, after we take out what we're paying contractors, we would split fifty-fifty with the county. And the county is requiring that in this first year we use their rates and forms. So we, to allow for, and to allow for certain priority county and veteran uses, which we already are aware of all of those. If approved, we would assume management after July first. And it's, the terms are, the terms are, in greater detail, are attached to the resolution. So the initial cost would be a deposit of ten thousand dollars, which is fully refundable after our agreement ends. And we expect that we would get all of that back. That's just a deposit to kind of put in, to put in there to make sure that covers any damage or anything else that might be our fault happening to the building. We already have the availability within the department's, the city manager's department's general fund. And then the main expense is going to be, would be staff time, which would be primarily myself and my coordinator and part-time staff, and any public works staff time that we can't contract out for. So the goal is to contract out for everything that we can, because we can be fully reimbursed by that. But then anything outside of that would be public works time. We're not proposing to add any additional staff for this first year and kind of just see how it goes. We think that we can book it more and use it for more programs. It's larger than the space we currently have. So we think we have an opportunity here to bring more access to the community, whether it be programs or rental spaces, or even parking lot spaces for farmers markets or any other sort of outdoor event. And after we, yeah, so the way that the breakdown works is that anything for rentals, or anything for rentals, we would split the revenue fifty-fifty after we reimburse ourselves for any outside fees, including utilities, cleaning supplies, cleaners, contractors. And then if we have program classes in there, then the revenue split would be seventy percent coming back to the city and thirty percent going to the county. So that would be classes like Zumba class or something else where we have an instructor that we also pay. And then the rental rates that are established were approved by the Board of Supervisors, and we can't change those fees without Board of Supervisors approval. And they, the county is not going to be doing that in this next year. So we have to use the fees that they have established currently. And anything after the first year, we would propose to them, and they would go out. Believe that with the demand for use in the Cotati Room currently, and our facility in general, our civic center and classes, that we could fill that up pretty easily. Maybe not as, not every day, but that we can book it more than it's being booked right now. Especially because some of our events that we're getting now, they don't fit in the space that we have available. So that's what we kind of think. And we're optimistic that we can achieve at least a net breakeven to not lose money in this first year. And if it, any extra revenue would go into the general fund. So that's where we're, that's where we're at. And so I'll read it again, but...
Of like a warmer, cool temporary shelter? And I'm wondering if we could add that?
We should be able to, but that would, could also be county, like a county use, because they have the capacity, they have the... There's a potential that they could say, "There's an emergency. We need that space. We're opening a warming center. We're opening a cooling center. We're opening an evacuation center." So there is somewhere around there in the county uses, but we can add it to a city use one, too. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think that was the criticism, is that we're relying on the county.
Yeah.
You know, if we have this building now, or alternatively, if we're booking this for something else, potentially we could use the Cotati Room for that.
Yeah, that's always available, too. Yeah.
For the city to have warming or cooling places.
And if there's any sort of emergency, we always have, we have the availability to boot a renter, unfortunately, for the renter. But, yeah, we have that option. But I can add it.
Great, thank you. And that's something that we may need to consider a little bit differently, because that is not part of the staff plan that you have? That would be much more intense.
Yeah, staffing is an entirely different thing. I mean, you always can throw doors open, but actually staffing is a different thing.
Right, because you can't...
It doesn't, I mean, it doesn't hurt to put the potential use in there, whether we can staff it or not is a whole different question.
Yeah, right. I mean, like, the likelihood that we needed something that large is pretty low, unless there's a mass outage. But we should be able to use the current Cotati Room or even the Police Department Community Room, which we've used before.
Does it have generator power?
It has heat. It doesn't have a generator, it doesn't have cooling. So cooling center would be a cooler place in the outside, because it actually stays pretty cool.
Right, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the, when we've done them before, I mean, the scale is like, you know, we've done, you know, when we have consistently warmer temperatures, like over a hundred degrees, we've opened the Police Community Center open. But it's been, you'll have like, just because we have staff there during business hours. And it, you know, you'll have one or two people, maybe. It's very lightly used. And so it just hasn't been something that's been, I mean, despite some public comment on it, there's really not been the demand for it.
Has there been, how has it been advertised that it's available? Does it go out on that?
It goes on social media.
It goes out on Nixle? Okay. I think the most that we had was during the PSPSs, because people didn't have power for longer periods of time, so they came to charge their, you know, their phones and, you know, other pieces of equipment. And that's, I think, where we saw a little bit more usage, because...
The PSPS, yeah, we used the Cotati Room, and we had it blocked out all day long. And so we had staff over there, and, I mean, rec staff. And we were just manning it all day long. And in that case, you had an extended power outage. And so people's, some people didn't have access, especially for medical devices.
Right, that's really what my concern is for elderly.
And Wi-Fi, you know, when we start stretching it beyond a day, starts becoming like two, three, four days long, then it actually starts becoming an issue for some people. Like, one day, it's like, it's really not that big a deal. But if it becomes like a multi-day event, it starts becoming a bigger deal.
Okay, great, thank you. And Ashley, can you remind me, the Cotati Room, this says that for assembly, the Veterans Hall can hold three hundred and twenty-nine people and two hundred seated in comparison? Can you remind me the numbers on Cotati Room?
Standing room only, and the Cotati Room is two oh five.
Okay.
So seated is around one fifty, I believe, with just chairs, and around one twenty with tables and chairs.
Okay, okay. Because I recall that that's been a problem in the past, because we've wanted to have events with tables and chairs, and it just was not quite big enough. So this will be, this would be add to that capacity, I think. So that'd be great. Did you have any questions?
No, I just agree with some of the comments made by Councilmember Rivers in as far as using it for emergencies in extreme weather situations. And even if PG&E brought out a station here, you know, maybe that's a good place where they could put one of their resource stations or something. And I just appreciate also the work and collaboration with the county and the city on better use of the facility. Okay, thank you.
Or did you have any other questions? No? Okay, then I will open this up for public comment. And we've lost our audience here. Could you check with our Zoom attendees, please?
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
Okay, thank you for that. Yeah, I know that at one point we talked about doing a grants program for some of our things. I know the county won't change their rates right now. Maybe in the future they might. But if not, when we get to a grants program, maybe this might be something that we might consider utilizing for some folks for that. Okay. Motion?
I'd like, I'd like to make a motion that it be recommended that the City Council adopt a resolution approving an official policy on, oh, nope, wrong one. Approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a license agreement between the City of Cotati and the County of Sonoma for use of the Cotati Veterans Building with the addition of the use of it for emergencies and as a warming or cooling station.
Okay.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, we have four and one recused. Okay. So we will wait. Welcome back. So Damian, are you taking this one?
Yes, I am. All right. That's somewhat readable. All right, so thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This item is the recognition and flag policy item in your packet. And as has been discussed before in prior meetings, we haven't flown a lot of ceremonial flags historically, so we don't really have any policy around it. And we also don't have policy around other recognitions that this policy gets into. So this item is to go through, go through a draft policy. That's before you. And also, there's a calendar included in the packet that's on the screen right now, that will at least prompt, hopefully prompt a conversation about what kind of proclamations the council wants to calendar. And this is by all means, this is by no means the definitive conversation about it, because I'm sure things will come up after tonight's conversation. But at least to start thinking about, you know, what we want to do. And at a minimum, it would be an annual conversation. I think, as points out in the staff report, proclamations, they can come up sort of, you know, ad hoc or generically. It's not a big deal. But when we're talking about flags, flying flags or ceremonies related to those, the main issue there is just time conflicts if they overlap, or, you know. So that's what some of this planning's hopefully going to accomplish by preventing this kind of conflicts. And I will just run through the policy, some of the main points on the policy that's attached. So the first part of the policy gets into letters of recognition, proclamations or formal resolutions. And related to people that are appointed or elected, the way the draft policy lays it out. And by the way, this is based on sort of an aggregate of other cities' policies that we found that cover similar topics. And so, anyway, a good starting point for the conversation tonight. Letter of recognitions, these are what we do right now typically when people finish their service on planning commission or council. We send them a letter, just basically like a thank you letter from the mayor. And this would be, this would still be, continue to be done, but it's just formalized to this policy now for anyone that's served basically less than two terms and is in good standing. And then for people that are more than eight, just to skip over this one in the policy, but for people that are on those bodies for more than eight years, eight years or more, I'm sorry, in a good standing, they, you know, they could get a formal resolution of the council, like what we did recently. So that's a, that's just a more formal resolution as opposed to like a thank you letter from the mayor. The third type of recognition are these ceremonial resolutions, otherwise known as proclamations. And they don't require, as you guys know, they don't require a vote of the council. It's just to recognize a group that should be recognized because of their contributions. And there's a list of items there that would qualify people for proclamations. And then after that section of the policy, there's a section on flags. And so the first section is just about the, it's just the normal federal state flag, rules that are in the government code. And then I think probably more applicable to the conversation tonight is a section on ceremonial flags. And basically, to fly a ceremonial flag requires a majority vote of the council. That way, it protects the council's prerogative for government speech. So you have a majority vote asking for that ceremonial flag. The maximum, the maximum number of days that it would be flown would be up to thirty-one days, so no one flag could be more than a month. The flag should be consistent with the city's vision. And that includes, you know, not endorsing particularly religious movements or endorsing religions, not endorsing political parties or elections, that kind of thing. So, I mean, pretty obvious stuff, I think. And just at a, just at a high level, those are some of the main, the main points around ceremonial flags. And then for flag-raising ceremonies, again, that would require a majority vote, the council to authorize that. And there wouldn't be any, any specific expenditures of public dollars other than, of course, staff... other than of course staff support, that's sort of implicit as part of that. And the, with the ceremony itself. If the, if the council does want to authorize funding, then that would be part of that motion at that time. And then for, in terms of logistics, the suggestion here is that the mayor is the organizing lead. Or if unavailable, the vice mayor would be the organizing lead. But that, either the organizing lead could delegate to another council member that maybe has a special interest in this if they decide to. And that organizing lead would be primarily in charge of setting the date and time of the ceremony and, and do some of the event coordination, lining up speakers, and just working, generally working with the city manager's office for the event. Such that we have a, primarily so we have a single point of contact that we can work with on these ceremonies. And the ceremonies would be here at City Hall. And this is just a suggestion, but as a, you know, 30 people is generally, I think, a good amount. The main point is that if we expect a giant crowd, we should make plans for that and do something different. And scheduled during normal City Hall working hours and days. And then there's a list of things that the staff would support sort of by default without any sort of special action by the council. So that's obtaining the flags, conducting the flag raising, bringing the podium down, providing it to two tables, sound system, and if any security is needed, then that would be hopefully pre-arranged prior to the, the date of the flag raising ceremony. And that is, that is it, except just a reminder that in the packet on page 515 is the list of proclamations that the city has issued over the last five years. Again, just to prompt the conversation about kind of what we've done in the past. We want to continue to do these. And they've been organized, except for the one typo for the, the American Red Cross Month proclamation, it's shown under one time, but that's actually a March item in the past. But I, we organized it by month, because that's probably how we're going to be thinking of it, sort of in the calendar, programming for these things. And, and also there was some comment received, actually from Councilmember Rivers, that you should all have a copy of, I think some suggested proclamations in different months of the year. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions or just take your input on other proclamations, flags, et cetera, that we may want to do.
Questions?
I have a question about proclamations without a flag raising, just normal proclamations. I know it's not in here, but how difficult would it be or is it something possible that we can do where we could invite, if any of us know, or members from some of these groups? I know some, some people submit and request proclamations, so they come to receive it. But for other ones, is it possible to include community members that could come and receive the proclamation?
Yeah, I think if, especially if the proclamation is, I mean, they're all going to originate from our, from my perspective, they're all originating from the council. But if there's not a community group that's been advocating for it and the council member wants it, it would be good for that, ideally that council member will know people in that community and they can have them come receive the proclamation, because that's definitely preferable if you have a proclamation to have someone there to receive it rather than just, yeah, an empty chamber.
Yeah, I would like to see that. I don't know how other council members feel, but I think it would be good to include inviting people from these communities to accept it.
Was that not the intent when you put in there that, that the person that was kind of the lead for that, that they would reach out and try and get someone from that group? Was that not the intent?
That was definitely in the flag section.
Yeah. I mean, it seems to be applicable for the proclamations, the whole, whatever the event is.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It is there under D in the third paragraph. The city council member can work with the city manager's office to arrange for a representative to receive it?
Okay. Yes, because I agree with you that it's always better to have someone here to receive it.
And I have a couple edit requests that I'd like the council to consider. For the, on packet page 520. C B, capital letter C, lowercase letter B. I'd like to, well, actually, just before we get that, in A, this English teacher alert. The, there's only one city council, so the apostrophe should be before the S, not after it, on that last sentence of letter A. Okay. So for B, this is policy, not grammar, that I, I would advocate striking just those first two sentences and starting with the organizing lead. The last two flag ceremonies we've had, I was, you know, de facto organizing lead and I am neither the mayor nor the vice mayor, nor was I appointed to do that. So I would just, I think it, I feel like it adds a layer of bureaucracy that's not necessary and that it could come from anyone on the council to be the organizational lead.
But my recollection is when they came up and we had the discussion on those two items, I think we delegated, if you will, that at Girole when we kind of approved those two, those two ceremonies. And you agreed to coordinate those two. And we did do it for, for that, that, those particular two. Because you brought them forward. So I think we did do that.
Maybe one way to resolve that is in the, the previous paragraph, A authorization, you could say the city council will also designate by resolution affirmative vote, which if any commemorative flags will also include a flag raising ceremony and designate an organizing lead for each ceremony.
That's fine. So does that mean we have to bring it before the council each time to designate a lead?
Well, so the hope is, is that, I mean, I know this is just our first time here, but the hope is that we would get this calendar kind of flushed out and we could do it all at once. And if we have to change it, then we have to come back and do it again. But we could in theory do, do them as a group, kind of like we do appointments at the start of the year.
And then just assign at that time whoever's going to do it.
Yeah. If something new comes along, then that's another vote you got to take, but, yeah. But hopefully we can do it together.
So it's just another column on, on the sheet that who is the, the lead for that year? Because I'm imagining that could change, you know, depending upon, you know, people's availability or whatever.
Yeah.
So it would be just another column?
So if this, like if this eventually settles into like an annual process, then it would be who's doing that, who's doing the flag raising for that item this year?
This year, yeah.
And then you'd have the same conversation again a year later, yeah.
And it could be done, as you pointed out, when we do our assignments. It could be just another list of assignments that we're assigning for that year.
Right. So with Laura's suggestion, are you guys okay with striking those first two sentences? In letter B? I'm seeing nodding.
I am, because it just makes, if we're designating the lead separately, then it's sort of redundant, yeah. I don't care.
Okay. I mean, it's not that.
Okay. And then the other, the end part of B? This organizing lead must coordinate decorations, food, tablecloths, napkin. That seems like super granular for a policy to me. And I would just offer that, that those last two sentences could also be stricken because, you know, it's going to be a coordination between city manager and the organizational lead as to what they want to include and what they don't, right? So it feels like this is just super, and there's going to be, there may be other things that are not on this list that we would want to include and things that are on this list that are not needed. So I just sort of feel like it's, it's, you know, micro-managing this.
So if we just strike those two, then, then my reading of this is it's trying to set up some clarity about what staff is expected to provide and what if a council member wants, a council member has to arrange for. And if we strike it, that clarity's gone. And I'm, I'm not, I would want to see a different, if you want it rewritten, that's fine, for a different kind of clarity. But I don't want to leave it so that a council member is going to the city manager and saying, "I want you to provide food." Because that's not what, I, I think that listing of what the staff will provide in part D, I don't want it to be a negotiation, like who's going to arrange the food and the napkins and the plates. If there's going to be that stuff, then, then that's the council member's responsibility in my reading of this. And I'm okay with that.
Well, it does say coordinate. It doesn't say have to do. It says coordinate. It could be, you know, a combination of books.
I just had a question, because I know we're sort of adding a new event that's somewhat similar to ribbon cuttings and things like that that we do already. Do we have a policy about who deals with the napkins for like ribbon cuttings? I'm just curious if we, like, do we go into this level of detail for like other kinds, other kinds of events?
We don't, we don't have a specific policy for ribbon cuttings. They're typically, they're typically just arranged by the staff. So there's not that conversation. And we don't normally have food and that kind of thing. It's just, it's kind of a pretty cut and dry. I mean, there's some, there's some exceptions in some cases, but they're pretty rare. It's usually pretty basic. And when you're reading other policies from other places, other cities, that was, I mean, that was what I got from similar language, is, is that they really just want to provide clarity on where the rules are between staff and, and council. I mean, whether all the, you know, all the details are there, I think that's fully up for discussion. But I think the point is who's doing what and making sure it's clear, so it's not left open.
I think when, when I read this, it kind of struck me as like, you know, almost, hey, if you want to do this flag raising, you got to do all the food, you know? Like, which is not the feeling I have about other events that the city puts on, you know? And it feels like if this is official governmental speech that we're doing, we've decided as a city to do, I, I'm all for not having food because it's too much hassle. But yeah, I, I, I would kind of agree with getting rid of the language about that the council member needs to deal with tablecloths and utensils, because it seems a little, I don't know, a little extra.
I mean, we could just drop food.
Yeah, I'd feel more comfortable if we just dropped food. Otherwise, I, I would hate for staff to have to go buy food and set up everything and, you know, that's like even an added burden.
So, so what happens when like we have the proclamations and sometimes there's food? Who, who brings that during the council meetings?
Yeah, so like cookies or cupcakes or something. That's, that's staff that bring that. It's pretty limited in scope, though, you know?
Right. As, as I imagine this would, I mean, what, so when I read this, this, this sounded more like a festival to me or like a, you know, some kind of, you know, grander event than at least we've had so far. And I'm not saying they couldn't be in the future. And I understand what Councilmember Ford is suggesting about having something to replace it that says, you know, organizational lead shall be responsible for anything beyond what was already stated before or something like that. And that, that's, that's great, but I just feel like this level of granularity is, feels, feels prohibitive, like it's trying to dissuade us from doing it.
Yeah, when you read other cities' policies, you definitely get the impression that some of these things turned into great big festivals instead of trying to stop that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know?
And in comparison, you, you brought up a good point about ribbon cutting ceremonies. A lot of them are done with the chamber and the chamber always has food. And then there's always people, you know, so it's kind of, you know, striking that balance of do you even want to get there? Because a lot of them do have food. And, you know, decorations and little favors and it can get quite elaborate. And I think that maybe that's probably what, what was trying to be addressed.
Yeah, that is, yeah.
Yeah. And I mean, you know, moving forward, once we have this all mapped out, maybe we could invite the chamber or the organizations that we're going to include to bring food or whatever, you know? And that would be on the organizational lead to organize that. And I think, so the idea that, that the organizing lead is responsible for the ceremony and anything that goes with it, with the exception of what is specifically stated before, I think addresses all of that.
Yeah. So are we suggesting taking all of the food stuff out of this for now?
Just like if food to the end of that paragraph.
It could start all the way up at the top, any vendor assisting, providing food. I mean, if we just kind of, or now, take food out of the...
No, I, I disagree. I feel like we should leave that just in case. Because like, for example, like what you were saying about the chamber potentially providing it, you know, if, if we want to, or, you know, if it was, you know, Juneteenth and the NAACP wants to bring something, you know, that'd be great. And I don't want to like not allow them to because it's not in the policy.
But then who coordinates that?
The organizing lead.
Which, which I thought you wanted that to come out.
But what I'm reading, what I'm reading here is that we do have food, that we have to have like an agreement and insurance for them to participate. Is that what we normally do with all our people that bring food for things here?
It depends. I mean, if it's a full catering thing, then, but I think, you know, maybe another way to address this is under the city staff support. It defines what the city's doing, the city staff are doing. And we could just say anything else is the organizing lead unless the council provides other direction.
Yeah, I think so.
Is that?
That works.
Okay. So that kind of, that whole paragraph, that whole paragraph gets...
So I think from the if food is served to the end of that can go.
And what about the vendor assisting with food?
Yeah, I think, I think we should leave that.
What if for Latino Heritage Month, I wanted to get my cousin to just make me some taquitos and bring them in or something, you know? And he knows, you know, he's professional, he'll bring the stuff and he'll take it too. He won't leave anything behind, you know? And so I don't know, is that something we want to put people through? You know, having to have them do the whole vendor thing and insurance and everything for something like that? It's just an example.
Yeah, no, I think it's, I mean, I think it's just when it, when it would bump up to like a health department issue. So if they're, if they're already, if they're like, if they have like in this case, like a taco truck or they have a already health department certified vending, then, then it's like no problem, right? It's just, or, you know, it has to be certified in some way or fall under some health rule that would allow it.
So I wonder if we can take that part out and then through the organization, kind of make sure it's with staff, that's clear through staff, you know, so that we know it's an official kind of vendor or something that, I don't know.
Because the, does the Chamber of Commerce have that? For the stuff they bring to...
They're not part of the city.
No, but they're a vendor providing food at a ribbon cutting.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, we don't check with them. That's their show, so we don't really ask them.
Oh, so, so when we go to ribbon cuttings, it's the chamber's event? It's not a city event?
Correct.
The chamber's leading it. Yeah, we're just there.
Okay.
They just happen to invite us.
But like for the park, the ribbon cutting for the park, that's not going to have food, right?
So...
For example?
Yeah, we haven't worked that out yet, but there might be like snacks or something for kids, like kid, kind of like juice boxes and that kind of thing.
Okay.
But nothing too over the top, is at least what we've been talking about so far. But it's pretty preliminary.
No, I mean, I'm not trying to dissuade it. I think it's good to have snacks for kids. I'm just trying to, you know, make sure that our, what we put together for the flag is in line with other city events.
So where are we at on this paragraph?
So, well, this is where, this is what I, sorry. So what I got so far was if food is served, everything down, from there on down is stricken out. The first sentence maybe can be reworded a bit just to say that the vendor shall comply with health rules, whatever that is.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's better.
That might be, I don't know, that might be more simple to deal with.
Yeah.
And then under city staff report, an additional statement that says something along the lines of unless authorized by council, organizing lead. the lines of unless authorized by council, organizing lead shall arrange for all other...
Accoutrement.
Yeah, all other elements of the ceremony, you know, whatever that is.
Yeah. Okay, are we, yes.
Well, so it feels like we're down to whether that paragraph needs anything in here. And it feels like we're trying to handle food service at city events policy within this policy, and that feels a little off to me. Like if we're going to get, so I don't know if we have a policy around food service at city events, but, but that's where they should be handled, not in the flag ceremony policy. So I would just take the whole paragraph out because it doesn't belong in this policy. It shouldn't be any different than food service at other city events. So I would just take it out, and then if it's ever an issue and we don't have a policy, we develop a policy.
I mean, by default, we would just follow the health department's.
Sure, right. So I'd propose just taking the whole paragraph out.
Okay, I'm convinced.
Okay, all right. We okay with that? Okay.
I have a separate question.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, you were gonna...
No, that's okay.
Okay, I had a question. I don't, I'm not sure on the protocol for reading of proclamations. I know the mayor has been reading them, but sometimes it seems like certain city council members are passionate about different ones. So I'm kind of wondering about the protocol and, for example, I think the Monarch Pledge, Vice Mayor Sparks was, had worked on that before and like Juneteenth, Councilmember Rivers, I'm kind of wondering about sharing some of the reading of proclamations and whether it's a protocol that the mayor reads them all. And I should have maybe checked ahead of time, but it was just something I was wondering.
So just to clarify, you mean at the, like at the ceremony or in the chamber?
In the chamber.
Okay, yeah. It's, I mean, it's been tradition that the mayor's always read them.
I wonder if with the increase of proclamations that we might have, maybe because we're adding maybe about five, six or maybe more, I'm not sure, if that's something that we might consider, having some shared reading of it?
Or maybe the organizational lead would be the one to do it.
Whoever the delegate, whoever the delegate is on the delegate.
But, but that's only for flag raising ceremonies, not for proclamations. We don't, we don't assign an organizing lead for every proclamation.
What I thought I heard was the flag ceremony and the reading of the proclamation. That's what I thought I heard.
Well, I mean, I was also asking about protocol for reading of proclamations even in the chambers.
Usually the mayor.
Yeah, usually the mayor, but I was just wondering, is that protocol or is that something because there'll be increased proclamations maybe next year?
I mean, the mayor's the presiding officer. The mayor could, I suppose, delegate that to somebody else to read.
I mean, we, I have seen that before when we've had a whole stack of them and someone just got tired of reading.
But, I agree with Councilmember Lemus. I think this, this makes sense for somebody who's the one bringing forward a proclamation. It doesn't actually say in the proposed policy that the mayor will do the reading, but I don't think. And so it just says the mayor shall determine whether a proclamation is read in its entirety. We could just add a clause there and assign the reading to an appropriate council member or something like that. And then, you know, I don't see any reason why it always has to be the mayor either.
Do you have that, Damian?
What page is that on?
That's on Page 19.
Yes, 519.
I've got mine all mixed up now. Wait, here's 519.
Okay, so the mayor shall determine whether a proclamation is read in its entirety at the city council meeting or a proclamation title and what is proclaimed. It would seem, it seemed like the delegation would have to happen first, and then that person would have to make that decision, I guess. It'd be kind of weird if the mayor said, "Don't read the whole thing, but you do it," you know?
Do we in practice ever not read a proclamation?
No, I've not. Not since I've been here.
Why doesn't the policy just say the mayor shall assign the reading of the proclamation to an appropriate council member or something like that?
May.
Well, you can assign it to themselves.
Yeah, if you're the appropriate one and you assign yourself.
Right.
So the mayor shall assign.
The proclamation should be read in its entirety at the council meeting.
Yeah, I kind of like the word may a little better just because it sounds like it's the mayor by default unless there's some other, I don't know. Otherwise, the mayor's always, I mean, I know, we all know what we're talking about.
May.
Because it's shall now, right?
Yeah.
You're going to change shall?
To may, if we're assigning, may assign. That's, that would just be my suggestion because, I mean, once we're all not here, it's going to make, it's going to read like the mayor needs to assign it.
Right.
And what about the second part of that sentence, or only the proclamation title and what is proclaimed? Do we, we never do that, right? So we can strike that part out?
Right.
Okay.
Wait, what part?
That same sentence in that third paragraph where it says orally, the proclamation title was proclaimed?
Right, we always read the whole thing.
Yeah, we read it.
I've not, yeah. Okay. So, yeah, I mean, I found some other ones too that I don't know whether we want to take public comment first and then, okay, all right.
On the calendar or the policy?
On the calendar. We need to discuss the ones that you brought up and then, then, then there's some more that we should at least consider, I think, all of them to add to our, whatever our finalist is.
Okay, no, I was just asking if we could do public comment on the policy and then maybe the calendar separate? I don't know, I don't even know how many people are here.
Well, we will do public comment once. Okay. So, all right, then I will open this up for a public comment and there's no one here and we just...
If I may, Mayor Harvey, it does appear as of a couple of minutes ago, our Zoom video has frozen.
Oh, because there were people and then they went away and then they came, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would like to try to restart it, but I do need to go behind the stage.
So do we need to take a five-minute recess?
Uh, that might be, that might be good.
Then can we take a five-minute recess while we try and get our technical whisserdery?
It was within the last five or so minutes. The audio's been working the whole time, but the video is frozen.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, at least the audio was working.
I know, we're getting there, we're getting there, we're getting there.
We're so close but so far away.
We're pre-pandemic.
Sonya, do you see the, do you see a cursor running around in there at all?
I see a cursor somewhere.
Oh, we have Lori back on.
Okay. I believe we're ready to go at this moment.
Okay, I would like to call this meeting back to order. Sorry, we had some technical difficulties, but we believe that they are solved, so we will continue where we had left off, and that was to open the flat, recognition and flag policy up for public comment. And we've lost our audience here in the room, but we do have attendees on Zoom. So Kevin, if you could ask our Zoom attendees if they'd like to comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon at this time. Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
Okay, so bring it back. So I'm not sure, I think we have the policy, and then how do we want to handle all of the individual items? I know you had made some suggestions, Kay.
Yeah, and there's one more that was on my list that didn't make it into my email as well, which is in May, is also Mental Health Awareness Month. And I had intended to include it in my collection, but I'm conflicted since we've got this on. Do you want me to just like think through what the others are?
I had just asked to add Mental Health Awareness Month to May. I sent an email with a list of sort of the major ones that we use in school that I thought would be good to include. So for February, Black History Month, March, Women's History Month...
May, Asian Pacific Islander History Month and Mental Health Awareness. September, Hispanic Heritage Month. October, Breast Cancer Awareness and Disability Employment Awareness Month. And then November, Native American Heritage Month were the ones that I was suggesting. And I went through about 20 different cities just to kind of see what they were doing and.
Mayor, can I make one correction to what she said? Can we change it to Latino Heritage Month for September?
Do you want to be Latinx?
I think just Latinos. People in Latin America say Latino Heritage Month.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I found some other ones. I found some cities do Cesar Chavez Day. Vietnamese Heritage Month. Public Safety Day. Philippines Independence Day. Filipino American History Month. International Holocaust Remembrance. And you had that one. Yeah, I only included the month, but I didn't do any days. Okay. Most of those, a lot of those were all overlaps. So those were the ones that I was, I found from other cities.
But are you proposing we add those to our calendar?
I'm asking if people want to. I'm not tied to anything in particular. Kay was asking for hers to be added, and I just found some others and didn't know if we wanted to entertain any of those. Also, I'm.
Can I ask a clarification to Councilwoman Rivers? Are you proposing we add these as proclamation? We add proclamations for these?
Yes.
Okay.
I, what, now that we have this whole policy or we're working on the policy, my, my proposal would be that we have these as proclamations. And then where there are people who wish to organize a flag raising ceremony, that they would step up and sign up to be the organizational lead for that. Otherwise, they'd just be proclamations.
Okay, and just when we set the calendar, we need to affirmatively vote to fly a flag if we're going to do that. So somebody can't step up later and say, I'm going to organize that. Like that has to be at the time we set the calendar because we have to affirmatively vote to fly a flag. Whereas proclamations can come forward at the request of a council member because they're not. Yeah, they don't open a public forum.
Yeah, it's, it's much smoother to do it in this process. Otherwise, you have to bring a separate item prior to that item being, prior to the flag going up. So it'd be another staff report. It just would be much more cumbersome. So it's the proposal, as Councilmember reports said, was to try to designate with this process if there's going to be a flag in a ceremony.
So what are your thoughts?
Well, I, I would be happy to add the months, the proclamations for the months that Councilmember Rivers identified. And I don't have any additional ones that I'm inclined to add to the calendar. But if others have other proclamation they'd like to add, I'm all for it.
I would agree with the ones that Councilwoman Rivers identified. They're the same ones that I identified. I did have a question, but maybe like Cesar Chavez, it's more of a holiday than Indigenous Peoples' Day, October 9th, so I'm not sure if that would require proclamation or is that just in place of what was on there previously? That could be like Cesar Chavez Day, so there's not really a proclamation for that that I'm aware of.
Yeah, and I, I misunderstood that we were going to have to vote on all of the flag raising ceremonies when we do this policy. I have not researched which ones have designated flags and which ones don't. And I would need to do that before, you know, like for example, you know, well, it doesn't matter, but you know, because I would be inclined to sign up for pretty much all the ones that I wanted. But I want to make sure there's a flag for it, and I don't know that there are flags for all of these. So is it possible to vote on the policy and then do the calendar at a later time?
So I mean, if.
Like even the next meeting?
Yeah, if the council wishes, I mean, I'd be happy to, to make the policy changes that were discussed tonight and just bring the item back and add these as well, bring the item back, and we can have another conversation about it at the end of July.
And how do we want to handle where there's multiples on a given month? Only one that I see obviously without laying them all out here is, is you have two in October. And two in May as well. So if we were. Okay, yeah. So if we were gonna, so I would, so this is again why I need to go and see what there are flags for. So if there's no flag for one or either of them, then we wouldn't have a ceremony. We would just have the proclamation. Does that make sense?
I don't think there's flag for many of them.
I don't think, I think there is not as well.
Yeah, I'm trying to think back. I know the county does flag raising for some things, you know, and I'm trying to align some of these with what the county does. You know, and I know we're not them, but you know, I don't think it's as many as twice a month. Other than the exception of what happened this month with Juneteenth and.
Pride.
Yeah.
Well, I can go, yeah, I mean, I'll sign up for Juneteenth and Pride right now. But we can also, you know, for the other ones, we can wait and see which ones have flags. Should we do as Damian suggested and do the policy and have him look to see what have flags? And then we can do the list and the assignment of the proclamations and flags next time? Will that, yeah?
Well, he was actually suggesting bringing them both back next time. But I think we're close enough on the policy, we could just do the policy. That's my sense.
Can we do the policy and the calendar separate? That was my question.
Yeah, the staff report actually requests that we do them separately.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, that'd be fun.
And on the calendar, I would support actually adding Indigenous Peoples' Day proclamation in October. I think it's different than Cesar Chavez Day, which is now a national holiday. That, and so I don't think it requires an additional proclamation from us, although I wouldn't object to it. So that was on the calendar. But back on the, but back on the policy, did we do anything other than designate, you know, change how we're designating the organizing lead and delete the food.
And also the reading.
Oh, you're right, there were several changes.
And the first two sentences of B as well.
Yeah, so if the council would, if the council would like, I can just read through what I got. And then you can say either that looks great or it's a little shaky and probably just bring it back and we'll take one more shot at it. All right, so the first one is under, it's packet page 519. It's under two D, it's the second paragraph below that. So it's the one that starts with the mayor shall determine whether, right? So there was revised, that sentence was revised to say, the mayor may assign the proclamation reading to another council member at a city council meeting. And that whole, so what sentence said before would just be gone, and then it would continue on with what's there. The city council member requesting the proclamation shall work with the city manager, blah, blah, blah. So it's just that first sentence that would change. On the, on packet page 520, under item C, flag raising ceremonies. So under item A, authorization. After that, to extend that first sentence that reads, the city council approves a city council commemorative flag calendar through resolution or affirmative vote and and designates an organizing lead.
The second sentence.
Yeah, it's the second sentence.
Second, yeah, sorry, yeah, and designates a second, yeah, designates an organizing lead. After the end of the second sentence. All right. There was a typo after the S, city councils in the last sentence on that same paragraph. And then paragraph B, the first two sentences would be strict, striked out, stricken out. And then on the top of page 521, that whole paragraph that begins with any vendor assisting with gets stricken. And then under item D, city staff report, or city staff support, there would just be a sentence added that says something to the effect of, unless authorized by the city council, the organizing lead shall arrange for other ceremonial elements, ceremonial elements beyond what's listed there as staff support. So that's what I have for edits so far.
Yeah, I feel like the edits are substantial enough that maybe we should have it come back once it's finalized. That's fine, so then we can see it again in writing. I'm, I'm good with that. So do you have direction at this meeting?
Yes, I'll bring back the marked up version of that resolution or the policy which read through. And I'll also add these events to the calendar of events that was on the screen earlier. And I'll also look at flags, try to identify any of these with flags. But the council should also, if you're interested in specific ones, look as well in case I miss it.
And can we add a column on that table that, for organizational leads so we can, you know, fill in, fill in the blanks?
Yes.
Draw straws.
Or could just go in the flag ceremony column because that's the only item, it's only flag ceremonies that get organizational leads.
Okay, yeah, you could just put a name under flag ceremony. And then it can just be done every year when we go through assignments. Yep, just kind of another, another page. Okay, so have we, are we done with that item? Is everybody fully satisfied with that? Okay, all right, so then Damian, I think you're up.
Oh, it's me again, okay, so.
Again.
Yeah. All right, so we have, as you guys know, a lot going on right now. The Kattati Park project is getting close to done. They have started adding the bark to the playground areas. So the swing area is already barked, barked out or whatever. I don't know if that's, if you can use that as a, use it in that way. But anyway, so that's barked, the other playground structures are getting barked. And then I think they're going to have, be inspected and probably by the end of the week should be certified to use. And then the restroom and some residual landscaping around there is the last little bit. And we're just waiting on PG to set the meter, the power, the electric meter in the back of the restroom to turn it on. And then we have to pour some concrete around it, so it's going to be a couple more weeks still, but it's getting close. La Plaza, West Sierra, so as you know, this project started up in La Plaza. They started grinding the asphalt downtown around the park. And they're working their way around the plaza first, and then they're going to come up by Sierra. So that's going to be moving quickly now, I think. The 2023 street reconstruction, that is pretty close to done. They are still, they've cat tracked out all the striping, so they're going to be doing striping soon to put the permanent striping on the roadway. Everywhere they did either paving or slurry ceiling. And then also they're working on the pathway in front of Putnam. So they're going to be doing that over the next couple of weeks as well, rebuilding that pathway. And city hall repainting is done except for the Kattati Room. The woodwork over the entrance still needs to be, they found some like termite damage or wood rotting. So they're having to repair that, and then they're going to stain it. That's the last little bit there. The Park and Ride project, that is, the bid's opening this week. So we'll let you know as we know more on that one. And we're also working on the pavement maintenance project for this fall. So that design agreement should be coming to the council at the meeting in July. So that's, that's coming up soon. The Redwood Drive and Cypress Avenue pavement reconstruction job, that I think it got approved by the California Transportation Commission. So the funding, the grant funding, right? Okay, almost approved. But, but once that's done, then we'll be ready to kind of wrap up design and get the grant funding things taken care of to be able to bid it and construct next spring. Ahead of that is the Cypress Avenue, Cypress Avenue Sewer Main Rehab. And that's going to just happen before the paving, obviously, so that we can get in the roadway and not cut into it later. The Kattati Hotel, you may have seen that they've started grading. So that's, yeah, that's, it's a giant milestone. And once they actually start the improvements, and what I mean by improvements are like flat work, like asphalt, concrete, utilities, then it'll, maybe I can pinch myself and I feel like it's real, but the grading's a great first start to that. They're trying to get that all done before, before winter rains so that they can just work on the vertical pieces through the winter. And for some recreation stuff, we had three camps, three summer camps in Kattati this week. Last week we had, last week we had our Spanish camp, our first farm camp, Camp Kattati, and our second week a theater camp. And then we're, and they finished off performances in La Plaza Park on Friday and Saturday. It's last, it was last week to a large crowd, so that was super cool to see. We also have our second week of farm camp and offer Camp Kattati through the summer. And then, as I mentioned before, we're doing half day options too for people that just want to do half day camps. And then this Friday, June 30th, we have our Kids Night Out event. That's five to nine where you can drop your kids with our camp staff, and they can hang out and play games, and the parents can do whatever the parents want to do. So it's kind of a misnomer, Kids Night Out. I always think it's like Parents Night Out, but it's, makes it sound fun for the kids, so it's the Kids Night Out. Lunch, we just, just as a reminder, we do free lunch in the, in the community center. So it is available to anyone Monday through Friday, ages 18 or under between noon and 12:30. You don't have to be registered with a camp or sign up, you can just come down. So we do that through the whole summer. It's basically an extension of the school lunches that we run during the summertime. The farmer's market continues to take place in La Plaza Park every Wednesday from 4:30 to 7:30 through the end of September. And there's lots of great stuff there that I, that you all know about, so I won't go into detail there. But coming up, July 8th, Saturday, July 8th, we have our 30th Annual Kids' Day Parade and Festival. And this year's theme is Surf Sup Kattati. And like usual, we have the, we don't have, but there's a pancake breakfast at Church of the Oaks at 8:00 AM until 10:00 AM, and the parade starts at 10:00, and it winds through downtown from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And it's lots of great stuff, so hopefully most of you can make that. And then as I mentioned with Kattati Park, we're wrapping that up. We expect to do a little grand opening ribbon cutting later this summer, so stay tuned for that. And with that, I will just be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Okay, thank you, Damian. And we will move on to city council member reports. Start this way.
Sure, I'll start. Today I actually went to the ribbon cuttings. The Kattati Chamber had one over at the Lady Bird, so I went to that earlier today at noon. Last Friday, actually Saturday, backtracking, Saturday morning, I helped out a couple hours at the music festival. Just some of the setup of the stages and setting up the bar area that they had, so I helped with that. And then the Friday before, I went, Sonoma Clean Power organized a tour of the geysers. And so it was an all day trip with the community advisory committee and some other members in the community that went out to see the Calpine-operated geysers. There's 400 wells in a 45 square mile area. So we went to visit some of the plants and the cooling centers. And after the fact, I learned that some of my uncles who were in concrete construction in the 70s, 80s helped build some of that. So that was pretty exciting. My cousin told me after, she's, oh, my dad was telling me. And so I thought, oh, really? I went to go see all those plants and the wells and everything. So that was exciting on Friday. So that's my report for today.
Thank you.
Nothing to report.
Or?
Nothing to report here.
Okay. Yeah, so unfortunately, the two by two by two got canceled, so I didn't get to go to that. But we had a lovely Juneteenth flag raising ceremony. The president of the Rancho Kattati Black Student Union spoke, Leila Parish. And Marjorie Crump Shears read a lovely poem called Tunk by James Eldon Johnson. And Mayor Harvey read the proclamation. And then Ms. Crump Shears and my son, Miles Rivers, sang Lift Every Voice, the Black National Anthem, while Kevin Peterson rose, raised, raised the flag. And it was very lovely. Vice Mayor Sparks and council member Sylvia, or Lemus also came, which I very much appreciate and understand that Ben was out of town, or I'm sure he would have been there too. and understand that Ben was out of town, or I'm sure he would have been there too. Sorry, Councilmember Ford. And then, so I also just wanna announce tomorrow is Coffee with Kay, so six to eight, for anybody who'd like to meet me down at Redwood Cafe, and, you know, sit and let me know what's good, what you'd like us to work on. And then for, from the library advisory board, there's a couple kind of fun things that are happening that I just wanted to highlight. July 13th, at 12, they're gonna have insect discovery for kids, which I think sounds super fun. And then for teens, they have a Northern Lights Party on the same day. And then on the 15th, they have the UC Master Gardeners Succulent Swap, so for anybody who's into succulents, that could be fun. And then just the last thing I wanted to say, Mayor London Breed contacted me as, I guess, the lesbian city council member of Kattati, of our fair city, to join her in the San Francisco Pride Parade last Sunday, so I got to walk with her contingent, which was pretty fun. So happy Pride.
Great, thank you. I have dull and mundane things. I attended the, we're in Sonoma, mosquito and vector control district, and we went through similar with the lighting and landscaping to go over the assessments, so the assessments for all the various different district areas for mosquito and vector control will be on the tax rolls, those were approved. I also attended the Zero Waste Sonoma meeting, and that, we had a very interesting discussion. They're working on a model ordinance for building project materials management, deconstruction, reuse, and recycling, so we had a really good presentation on there. We recommended that staff actually reach out to more of the cities and some of the building trade groups and kind of get their feedback on it, so we did not approve it, even though they wanted it approved at this point. So more to come on that, that ought to be really good, and they're, they're really trying to also focus on the, in particular, on some of the historic buildings where they deconstruct and have the ability to reuse some of that stuff. Apparently that happens, they mentioned in particular that that happens a lot in Santa Rosa, where they just bulldoze a lot of historic buildings, and they're hoping that, you know, they can deconstruct and reuse that stuff. On the 15th, I attended the North Bay Division meeting out at Watson Ranch in American Canyon, and as, as I said earlier, it's a 300-acre project, and it's in like an old, it was like a cement factory out there, but, but they're building kind of a little mini-city almost, so they've got a huge plan going on for it, so they, they just, they just started it, and they, they just got delivered all of the affordable housing units, and it was really neat to go inside of them and see how they kind of connected all the utilities, but they were really, really very, very nice, so that's kind of exciting for out there. And then I attended on Friday, went to the city, I'll have you know that I, that I took the Smart Train and the ferry and walked, and it all timed perfectly together, so that was great, and went to ABAG where they approved the budget for this year, and they had some additional speakers, and they also had a celebration of ABAG's 60th anniversary. And then I had to head back out to catch the ferry, to catch the Smart Train, and, and arrived back, so it worked out very nicely. So that is all I have to report, and I also attended the Juneteenth event, which was very lovely. And the weather was nice for us, the sun came out, and these days it's been sort of June gloom, so that was nice that we had a sunny day that morning, so that was beautiful. So with that, we can move on to the, yeah? Oh, yeah?
I just forgot one last thing, which was the Ronert Park Kattati Library, celebrated 20, 20 years, the anniversary reminded me of that, and they had jazz and some good food and great company, so that was a really nice event at the Kattati Ronert Park Library.
Thank you. All right, then we will move on to the next item, which is public comment on non-action agenda items, and we have lost our audience here, but we do have attendees on Zoom. Kevin, give me the honors.
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
All right, thank you for that. Then the next item is closed session. We will be moving to closed session, which is conference with real property negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8, property portion of APN 144-275-001, and right-of-way adjacent to the southeast boundary of APN 144-275-001 in Kattati, and the negotiator is the city manager, and negotiating party is Tesla Incorporated. Under negotiation is pricing terms of payment. So with that, we will adjourn to closed session.
All right, I would like to call this meeting back to order. We are back from closed session and we have nothing to report. So we will move on to the next item which is information received after the agenda was posted. Kevin, do we have any information other than?
Just the materials that were already provided and uploaded to the web agenda. There was an email from Councilmember Rivers as well as some diagrams for the LLAD report that were mistakenly left out.
Okay, thank you for that. And then I will call this meeting adjourned at 9:30. Thank you.